The first thing is additional agenda items. There are none. I wanted to check with my colleagues if anybody wants to pull anything from the agenda. Reminder that now is the time to do it so that I can reorder things and also if there's any staff who's here who is waiting to see if they need to be here for an item, if they don't need to be, they can have an earlier evening. So seeing none. Then an agenda update for upcoming meetings. Just wanted to remind folks that next week, the 16th, is Ward Six Night and also first reading of the budget ordinances. The following Monday, the 23rd, is the second reading of budget ordinances. The following week, we meet on Tuesday, May 31st, after Memorial Day Monday. We're going to have a presentation on the use of cable equipment funds and the Comcast franchise agreement and also a work session on the emergency preparedness committee discussion with the council. I also wanted to remind my colleagues that on Monday, June 13th, two items coming up in the work session. One is a discussion of MML legislative action requests. It'll be the time of year to turn those in, so anything, we want a request for priority legislation for the league for next year. It's time to think about those. And also, we'll have a discussion regarding city committee interaction with the city Next item on the agenda is public comment period for anybody who'd like to make any comments on anything that is not on the voting agenda this evening. So anything that's a work session item, we'll hold the comments for public hearing after this, so a public hearing would go later as well. And if you can come to the podium, identify yourself and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Hello. My name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Ward Four, your favorite Peach delegate. And I also want to let you know about an upcoming event in June. June 29th, 30th, 1st, and 2nd, those four days, we're having the Starving for Justice, protesting the death penalty. We do it every year. So we're going to try to get the death penalty taken off the books around the country as soon as possible because it lowers the crime rate, it increases the crime rates, we all It's also applied racially biased and very unfairly. And we don't have a right to take a life just because somebody else took one, doesn't mean we're going to do it. It doesn't bring the life back. It's just another form of destruction, war against the poor. And we have that done in front of the Supreme Court every year, from the 29th, the 30th, for June, and the 1st and 2nd of July. So don't forget that, everybody out there who's watching this, and if the city council can come down, I'd greatly appreciate it. Another thing I'd like to do is get more citizen participation in our city council meetings. I'd like to see more people in the audience. And I'd like to see more kids coming up, like for Ward Six Night. I'd like to see the parents out there, if they're listening, to bring their kids out tonight on Ward Six Night. That's next week. So it shouldn't be too hard to start bringing your kids up, you know, with a good attitude towards citizenship because it's one good way to keep them out of the gangs and keep them away from drugs, is to get them educated properly and to get them participating at a young age. And I think if we can do that, we can make an inroads on this. You know, and also, you know, if we can really start getting people to come out to this, if we can post notices in schools and around town somehow or other, if we can get the kids interested in participation, I think it'd be great because junior high and high school is a good time to start doing that. And even in elementary school, some kids are probably wondering, you know, what it's like to be working with our government. Well, they can always come and learn and participate. And I'd greatly appreciate it if we could get notices up in the schools somehow, talk to the teachers, and maybe put it on their curriculum. You know, maybe a citizenship night for the kids. I think that'd be great because the Boy Scouts come over here quite often. And I think the schools could do it, too. And I'd really like that because, as you all know, I think, you know, reaching out to the youth is a good way to stop the violence and stop the gangs. I think we can do it. It shouldn't be that hard. Thanks for letting me share. Remember Tacoma Park leads the way in peace and justice. So don't forget to come out to the Starving for Justice. Thank you.
All right. Rules. Love it.
I'm Bruce Sedwell. I live at 7209 Spruce Avenue. And I hope that many of you have heard that the National Wildlife Federation has recently certified Tacoma Park as a community wildlife habitat. This is after an effort by residents as well as the public works on this particular issue. To celebrate that, I wanted to invite all of you and anyone else in the sound of my voice who wants to come to a little celebration that we're having at Spring Park on May 22nd, 2:00 in the afternoon. That's just after the farmer's market would close up, so you should be able to just walk on down the hill. We've got the, let's see, we've got a professional baritone saxophone player lined up to make some noise at the beginning, and we have the poet laureate of Tacoma Park scheduled to speak. And we also have a photogenic young child to be there to help to plant a tree. So as well as the mayor's going to be there and then others to kind of make sure that this certification ceremony goes well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm forward to it.
Bruce, you said 2:30? Is that what you said?
It's at 2:00, and if you need to check any details, it is on the city calendar. There's a link there that goes to the Friends of Sligo Creek website. Friends of Sligo Creek has been working with Daryl and the other public works people to make sure that the park looks good and everything goes well. Thank you.
But it always looks good.
It's exceptionally good.
Good evening. My name is Marty Itner, and I'm steward of Section 2 of Sligo Creek. And I'm here with a report from about a month and a half ago from the Washington Adventist Hospital situation with the creek. And we have Dean here tonight and the new president, Joy Portella. Joyce, sorry. I had a client named Joy Portella. Anyway, we've had some meetings at the hospital and very happy to report, we are getting a rain garden on the campus of the university, which is really exciting and wonderful. And we looked at some incredible plans for the drainage and the water, the problem of the water coming down the hill. And I would like to say that I am very excited by these plans, but I'm concerned about the short term. The long-term plans look great, even if some of them took place. I would be thrilled. But I am the eyes and the ears of the creek, and we still have dirt and water coming down and dumping dirt on the path. And so I will wait to see what happens, and I hope we can hear about some short-term stuff tonight as well as long-term stuff. And I've also asked Dean to remove the garlic mustard, which, if anybody knows about garlic mustard, it's a horrible invasive plant, and he's said he would take it out. So that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then we'll move on to council comments. Councilmember Robinson.
I just want to give a short report on the state of the House on Sycamore Avenue that's in such a state of disrepair. I'm glad to report that there's a new tarp on it. And I can't say much, but I've spoken with the parties involved in the negotiations peripherally, and they report that things are going forward, so there's hope. I wanted to make sure I said this because I know that the folks on Sycamore are anxious and looking forward to some good outcome on that house, which has been in disrepair for a long time.
Councilmember Clay.
I want to let everyone know that we have the fourth installment of the Capital City Cheesecake Concerts coming up on Thursday at 7:00. So if you haven't had an opportunity to attend one, they're a lot of fun. I got to go to the last one with Ladle Fight and introduce the band, and the place was packed, so that's a lot of fun. That is coming up on Thursday, the 12th, and this time we have Dariel Day and Kristin Cadigan, and they're going to be singing traditional sea shanties and Celtic songs. So that'll be a good time, and I hope you'll all consider joining us. I also have been talking more with the folks on East West Highway, Ethan Allen, about the road condition, and there's continued frustration and some commentary from the Washington Gas subcontractor that is inaccurate information that they're giving out. So I think maybe we should talk to Washington Gas and tell them that they should talk to their subcontractor and either fill them in so that if they give out information, they give out factual information, or tell them to stop giving out false information. But one way or the other, I think that it's really unhelpful and has actually irritated the residents. The most recent incident is that they suggested that it is the city prevented Washington Gas from being able to dig trenches along the side of the road instead of going right down the center of the road and therefore forced Washington Gas and the subcontractor to dig the giant ditch going down the center of the road, which actually is not a factual statement at all. The city didn't do that. It wasn't our plan. It was Washington Gas's plan. It was driven by Washington Gas decisions and didn't have anything to do with the city. So I'll be working on getting out the actual factual information about that to the city residents, but it's really, it's frustrating to have to go back over the innuendo and misinformation from the subcontractor. I think instead, they should concentrate on fixing the gas line in a timely manner and agreeing, keeping with their agreement not to leave plates all over the road on the weekend and doing a better job of filling in the patches. And my last comment is that I have, I think what might be the last box of lemon chalet creams, and I'm taking bids.
Councilmember Siemens.
Some of you will remember that a couple weeks ago, I announced that I had gotten a new electric lawnmower, and I just wanted to let you know, I've actually used it, and it's really, doesn't hurt. It's just like mowing your lawn with a regular gas-powered mower, although, as my wife says, it's a little bit more like vacuuming the rug because you have to remember where the cord is. But this is part of my, I've decided, since it was announced last week that I had another birthday and I'm getting a little older, that I needed to upgrade myself and my image. So I've decided to go green, be more New Age. And so as part of that, I got myself a bike. And, well, I didn't go out and buy a new bike because I can't afford that, so I got a used bike, and I'm getting that fixed up. And my target date is May 20th because May 20th is Bike to Work Day. So I encourage everyone to bike to work on May 20th, and if it happens to fall on a Monday, you'll see me bicycling down here to the community center since this is my job.
I just want to say, Councilmember Siemens, that we used to have an electric lawnmower at my parents' house, and my father was very adept at running over the cord. And my father was also an electrician, so he could repair the cord, and he taught me how to repair the cords. And thus, if you run over your cord, I can repair your cord.
I'll bike right over and ask you. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Well, in light of Councilmember Siemens buying a bicycle, it's good to know that the emergency room at Washington Adventist Hospital is still open. But I do admire your green tie, and I think that's a step, symbolic step, green and gold, I think. It's nice looking. I have just one thing, and that's to remind everybody yet again about next Monday night is Ward Six Night. Ward Six finally gets its turn, and we're real excited about it. I think we're going to have a big turnout because I think some folks are going to be bringing goodies from Ward Six food places. And I also want people to understand that Ward Night, and this really, I'm addressing my constituents in Ward Six because others of you who haven't participated already know that it's an opportunity for any citizen or any resident, really, you don't even have to be a citizen, to come to the, come here, and you're not necessarily restricted by the three-minute rule. You do have to kind of stay on topic. We're not here to talk about, you know, the American League pennant or something like that, but stay on topic, and you can have your turn to talk about whatever issues or ideas or what-ifs that you want to talk about. And this is at least one time a year when you can really do that. And you can do that among all the other members of people from Ward Six who will be there. So it should be an interesting night. I'm looking forward to it, and I hope to see lots of folks come out and at least listen if you don't want to come to the podium. Thank you.
And I just got a couple quick things to cover. First, I'll respond to Councilmember Siemens bringing up about the lawnmower and the possibility of running over the cord. I dragged my lawnmower out for the first time this weekend and didn't run over the cord because it doesn't have a cord because it's battery-operated. So there's yet another way to skim that cat.
Did it run?
Yes, it did. I wanted to thank the residents of the Pine Crest area for their putting together and having a very nice neighborhood block party. They got permission from the city and closed off the street and had their first neighborhood block party in some years. And I know Councilmember Robinson was there as well, and I just wanted to use that as a reminder to all the neighborhoods in the city that if you want to have a block party, you can apply to the city and get a block or a couple blocks closed off, and it's a real nice opportunity for everybody to get out and meet their neighbors and enjoy the nice weather now that we're past less good weather. I was at a two-day meeting the end of the week in Alexandria, and that was the Local Government Advisory Committee on the Chesapeake Bay. And one of the outcomes of that was that those of us who have been appointed by the governor to be on that committee renewed our efforts to put together something that will enable us to come back and share information with our colleagues and also with our communities about what's going to have to happen with the various tightened rules on cleaning up the bay so that I should be coming to you all with a lot more focused information on what's going to be happening and how we can address it. And it was very helpful to see what some other communities are doing. It provided me with a lot of information that I will be sharing. And then the last item I wanted to mention was I'm going to be going to Annapolis next week on May 20th.
That's biking?
I'm not going to bike to Annapolis, but that is the annual celebration of If I Were Mayor Day. And there are going to be, I think, 11 4th grade students honored.
That's not for Terry?
No.
Okay.
He finished the 4th grade a few years ago. And this was an essay contest, and I think there were over 20,000 submissions for the contest this year. And just wanted to remind particularly parents of elementary school students in Tacoma Park that every year, there's an opportunity for students to learn about local government. I go talk to the schools and talk to the kids about what's involved in city government and being an elected official. And I'd like to see more participation from Tacoma Park students next year, and we'll look forward to working with the schools and teachers, but it would also be helpful if parents can remind their kids that this is a great opportunity and to work with their principal and their students and the teachers to make sure that we can come to your school and talk about local government. And that's it for council comments. Does the city manager have some comments?
Yes, I have just a few items this evening. Chief Rakucci had asked for a few moments to publicize some community programs that the police department is sponsoring.
Good evening. I want to remind everyone, Wednesday night, excuse me, Thursday night from 7:00 to 9:00, we're offering a free crime prevention seminar here in the Azalea Room on the second floor. Everyone in the community is invited. We waive free registration. We just want you to come out. It'll run from 7:00 to 9:00. You can stay for a few minutes. We'll have brochures, we'll have some introductions, some of the programs we're going to be doing this summer, and we invite the whole community. Second program, we sent out an email on it, but I want to just mention it tonight. It's very special, it's very close to me. It's Take 25, which is a preventive child safety campaign which was created by the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. It's in honor of National Missing Children's Day, which is May 25th, and it serves as a reminder to make child safety a major priority in your lives for parents and grandparents, aunts and uncles. We will have a table set up in the lobby of the Tacoma Park Police Station from 10:00 to 4:30 PM. We'll be giving out different brochures for kids and for parents. Now, the big thing that I'm announcing tonight that I know every parent wants to do, we're going to offer free child fingerprinting so we can fingerprint your child, so you have it on record. It's a nice tool to have. You never know when, hopefully you never have to use it, but it's something to have if the incident come up. We'll be doing it in our lobby. Carl McNay, our temporary community resource officer, will be there to help up parents, answer questions, brochures. We will have stuff for both English and Spanish speaking, and the main thing is, we want to get the kids out, get them fingerprinted. So that's May 25th from 10:00 to 4:30 PM. We invite parents and their children to come to the lobby of the Tacoma Park Police Department. And once again, a reminder about Thursday night from 7:00 to 9:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Several months ago, there were representatives from Washington Adventist Hospital in attendance to address the council about the diesel spill into the creek. At that time, the council had asked if the hospital officials could come back in about a 60-to-90 day period to provide the council with some information about what they're doing to prevent a similar occurrence. And I think tonight, we have Joyce Portella, the new president of the hospital, in attendance as well as Dean Teague.
Welcome to both of you.
Thank you. Good evening. It's good to see you again. You know, being a large business in the middle of a neighborhood brings its own set of frustrations, and we take the role of being a good neighbor very seriously. I've been at the hospital close to two years now, and I can see when something happens like this diesel fuel spill that happened, the devastation inside the hospital is palpable. And so I understand how it then affects our neighbors and causes such grief. Because we take that role very seriously, there's been a lot of action going on related to not just the cleanup, but some prevention plans as well as other things that we're doing to try and help take care of the creek because we know it's a very important and precious resource. And so Dean Teague, Vice President of Operations for the hospital, is going to walk through those plans. His comments won't be long, but we look forward to addressing any concerns that you have about what we're doing currently and the long-term plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Last time I said I didn't have the opportunity to speak, actually Jerry did most of the talking for him, which was quite nice, but since I'm here and I'm on the heat, I want to go ahead and let you know what we've done. In the process of doing the cleanup, we finally got the Montgomery County Department of Environmental Protection Agency. On Wednesday, we met with them, and they were the final close that we had for the spill itself. The state attorney general actually closed out the issue for us in early April of this year, having gone through the cleanup process and some of the safety measures we put in place. Clean Ventures, which is the subcontract we use for cleaning up the water and the spill itself, came in and closed all the booms out. And actually, Marty had found a boom that we missed that was in the creek. It had broken away during a storm, was floating to the other side, and that was picked up on, I believe, Thursday or Friday of last week. The safety measures that were put in place have gone into effect. Some of them are simply putting human factor back into it, meaning that if the generator goes off, we now have an electrician that's called in for that generator. If the building is empty after hours, then the generator's secured and the building is locked so that nobody can go inside of the building. The other thing that's put in place now is that we have two locking mechanisms on the system itself. If you remember, the diesel fuel was transferred from a large storage tank to a smaller tank that's located on the generator itself and holds approximately 50 gallons. In the past, there was a float switch that actually activated when the smaller tank got empty and would transfer the fuel manually. Now, that can't happen. We have to actually unlock the valve on the tank and then the valve to fill on the big tank, and the valve to fill the small tank has to manually be opened, and then it's ran by an operator. We've limited the amount of fuel in that tank to 30 gallons now instead of 50. So we've put these pieces into play. We have actually had the generator now, since the last time we met, go off on two different occasions. One time was 1:00 in the morning on a Saturday about three weeks ago. The second time was at 3:00 in the morning on a Sunday about a week and a half last week, and both times, the generator was secured so that it wouldn't run because there was nobody in the building. We have to have the generator in place because we don't have an emergency fire backup system inside of the building. We're required by code to have one or the other, and this is the one that was put in place originally, so that's why we have it. I know that Mr. Snipper had asked before about a moat around the generator itself. We talked with the EPA about that. The issue was that they don't like to put motes in around generators at this particular point because they actually tend to hold water inside of them, and then you have a mosquito problem. The other thing is, we'd have to take down four pine trees in the immediate area to build that up. So we put the mechanical locks in place figuring that would actually meet the requirements, and that's what we actually presented to the EPA, both in the state and the local EPAs. I don't know if anybody has any further questions or if I've answered them all.
I have another question.
Go ahead. Councilmember Clay.
Yes, ma'am.
So what's the, it's not miles per gallon or per hour, but 30 gallons of gas, how long will that run the generator?
Under a full load, it will probably run it for about an hour, hour and a half.
Okay.
It runs, it just depends what the load is on the generator itself, and since that generator only runs the conference center, if it's during the day, it could be a bigger load than it would be in the evening, which could make it go a little bit further.
But it's enough time for your person to come and monitor.
Absolutely. In fact, what we're trying to do is, when notified security, they'll kind of keep patrol in the area until the electrician gets in to either secure it or stay with it while it's running.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you both for coming tonight. I appreciate the report back on, you know, what you've done, and it sounds like you've tried to take steps to reduce the risk for the future. I think there's two things, though, that, one of the things that I think was a concern to the council in the past was the speed with which the hospital responded to the problem when they recognized and actually took the steps to start to resolve the problem. And then the other thing is, and neither one of these really need a whole lot of answers, it's just giving you what I hope to see downstream, you know.
Yes, sir.
Beyond this, is not just fixing the immediate problem, but responding more quickly in the future. And then the other thing is doing a better assessment of the potential risks on-site. You know, you have a large business there, as Joyce mentioned, and so there, I'm sure more than just that one generator, that could be potential problems. I know there've been past problems, and so, you know, being, I would like to know that you're feeling comfortable with the risk assessment that you've done, and if it hasn't been done yet, that you are going to be taking steps to do that in the future.
Certainly, sir. We do have other generators. There are actually three more generators located behind the hospital itself, which is our main emergency power. And those tanks, in order to prevent something like this, actually have a system that will, in the event that that tank were to overfill, will take and dump it back into the other tank so it will cycle through. tank, so it will cycle through. We couldn't do that with a tank this small, because of the size and the height of the gravity flow. But we did go back in and do an evaluation on that tank. And we have a company called Albin Generator. They're located over Virginia. They do all of our maintenance on that. So we haven't come back out and checked all of those safety sets to make sure that we didn't have anything that we were missing. The EPA actually is talking with Siemens, the Montgomery County EPA is talking with Albin now to find out, you know, what are the kind of measures they might have in play. But we followed, you know, the guidelines that are established by that contractor for those. And there is an annual requirement to check the tanks for leaks and all of that. We're still required to provide that to the state of Maryland, which we do. It's quite expensive, but it's something we know we have to do, so we continue to do it.
Yeah, and I guess, and I appreciate that. I think it's valuable, and you've kind of gone to a higher step and talked about the other generators on site. I'm just asking you to go up even higher level and say, you know, besides generators, what are the other potential polluting sources within the hospital grounds? I think in the past, we've had a problem with, and I don't remember the exact details, but there was a drain that was being used that was washing pollutants down into the creek. And again, it's just to do an assessment of the various potential sources and taking steps to minimize the risk going in the future.
Yes, sir. I can assure you that we'll do just that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks very much.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
I don't think we have any legislative update. Oh, you have more.
Yeah, two more items. They'll be very quick, because I know there's some folks here for the public hearing. Last week, Councilmember Siemens had asked if I could meet with representatives of the Independence Day Committee. And I just wanted to share with the council, I did meet with Jean Herman and Marion Miles last week. There is a letter that I received, and I'm sure each of the council will as well, so I won't go into any detail. There will be a reviewing stand this year. And I think the committee kind of made a specific request regarding vehicles. One of the things that they shared that I think was a very good point is, they are having difficulty finding people with cars. It's obviously a holiday. People are wanting to spend with their families. There has also been some frustration on the part of some of the drivers who basically show up with cars, get people up the hill, and then people start walking, and the drivers are sort of stuck in the middle of the parade traffic, and that's been a frustration. What the committee has asked, I guess, is that encouraging everyone who's a participant to use alternative modes of transportation, whether that's a bike, a segue, whatever you want. You know, if someone has special needs and needs to ride in a car, prefers to do so, I think their first request would be that the individual participant try to make arrangements to use their own car. But if push comes to shove, they can certainly help with that. So each of you probably won't be receiving a letter in your mailbox if it's not already there today, tomorrow. And they do have a deadline that they'd like to know what people's plans are. It's May 27th. So you can just read the letter from the committee and go into a little bit more detail if you'd like. The last item I had was just relative to the budget and just a few quick comments. Been talking to the staff as we try to bring everything to conclusion, and there are a couple of projects included in the FY11 budget that will not be complete as of June 30th. So when you see the reconciliation list next week, you will see just a few carryover projects from FY11. I have had several conversations with the state retirement system about the pension issue that was discussed at great length last week. I do not have definitive answers. Those conversations are continuing. I have stressed that we do need some resolution to some of the outstanding questions for our budget process, so I hope to have those answers by next Monday. If not, we may just need to make some adjustments at second reading of the budget ordinances. The last item, and this is sort of a combination, Mayor, of both my comments and the legislative update, if I may, which has to do with the county budget process. The county council is currently going through their budget reconciliation process. We do have a number of items that are in play in that process. Today, they did consider the recommendation of the Fed Committee regarding the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center payment. I think I had mentioned this in one of the agenda cover sheets. That payment, as initially proposed by the executive, would be cut 15%. The recreation budget was only being reduced by about 5%. I think it was just simply an error as they were trying to bring their own budget process to conclusion on the executive side. So there is a reconciliation item that would restore some of the funding potentially for the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center. We'll need to see how that works out. The two other items, which will be discussed by the county council, actually really not discussed, but are on their list tomorrow, are the police tax duplication payment, which the city has flagged as a priority. I included the council on an email that I sent to the county council on Friday. There is also a reconciliation item dealing with other tax duplication payments, which would impact potentially our payments for park maintenance and road maintenance and crossing guards. All of those reconciliation items, if ultimately approved by the county council, would restore funding to the city. The process tomorrow is they have 51 items on their reconciliation list. It is basically being voted in a single vote unless a member of the county council chooses to take one of those 51 items off the table. Once that vote happens tomorrow, there'll be a lot of informal back and forth with the county council. And we really won't know until probably the 19th what the ultimate outcome is for those three items that we have in play. So once again, I don't think we can count on those revenues in terms of the first reading of the budget ordinance. My hope is that by the time the second reading comes around, we'll have gotten an affirmative indication from the county that those funds will be added, and you may see some adjustments on second reading. So we still have a little ways to go.
Councilmember Ray, your question?
I just had a question about the process of those 56 items. If someone chooses to pull one item off, does it blow the whole thing up and they have to start voting on every individual item? Or can they choose to just, because I'm just, I don't know what the 56 items are, but I know there are some.
Oh, 51, yeah, there's a lot of them.
And there's some contentious items in the budget process.
My sense in talking to the county staff, and Suzanne also had some discussions with some other county staff, is that it is highly unlikely that they will be pulling items off. That a lot of the back and forth will probably happen between tomorrow and the 19th. I don't think it'll mess everything up. I know, just talking in communication with the mayor and some of the folks with the chapter, because we were all planning, obviously, to show up tomorrow and force for the tax duplication item. I think we just simply need to have a representative, but at least the indication I have, Councilmember Ray, is that most of the items will not be pulled off the agenda.
Thank you. And so there will be at least two municipal representatives?
Correct.
One of them will be the deputy city manager.
Right. And that's it, unless there's any questions about anything.
I don't see any. Thank you. Okay. We will go to our public hearing, which is a public hearing on the Hilltop Road traffic calming. And is somebody going to introduce anything, or are we just going to go straight to the hearing?
I think just go straight to the hearing. Unless, Daryl, is there anything that you wanted to say?
Okay.
I'm going to go grab your list.
Thanks. So we'll take, first of all, any people who have signed up for the hearing on the sheet coming in, and then we'll take anybody who didn't get a chance to sign up.
I believe it's Jacqueline Moore. This is the only person who signed up.
Okay. And just to remind folks that the podium there has a button to raise up or down, so if the height isn't comfortable, there's a button there to your left.
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you for letting us speak this evening. My name's Jacqueline Moore. I live on Aspen Avenue in the block between Lincoln and Boyd. We're neighbors. I've been using the Park Crest-Hilltop-Park Valley route to get from my neighborhood to where I work every day since '92. For a long time, I used to ride my bike, but I came down with rheumatoid arthritis, and so I can't count on my bike anymore in case I have a wicked flare. So I don't know where we are as far as traffic calming. I don't know if we're still talking about closing the road, but I just wanted to mention that the neighborhood streets, and we can't really force any more traffic onto 410, because it can't be widened, because there's a lack of space, and obviously, in this climate, there's a lack of funds. I just, I don't, I'm not in favor of disconnecting neighborhoods. And I've rarely ever seen a line of cars, more than three to five cars long, at the top of Park Valley and Piney Branch. The only exception would be when there's a traffic light that's out due to a storm or electrical failure, or if there's been an accident on Piney Branch. And I happily and responsibly pay my taxes to Tacoma Park, Montgomery County, the state of Maryland, federal government. And roads are paid for with public money and therefore should be accessible to all taxpayers at all times. If you want to close off or limit access to roads in our neighborhood, I suggest to people who live in the Sligo Creek Hills area, maybe start looking for property in Bethesda, Chevy Chase, or Potomac. Those of us who work in and provide services to our fellow citizens in this county and the city should not be penalized. I know that there was a terrible accident several years ago that happened on Piney Branch, where a driver who was trying to escape from DC police mowed down a little girl named Brooke Williams. Well, Brooke was one of my students over at Ashburton. And that was not a neighborhood traffic issue. That was a drunk driver running from Johnny Law in DC. So, and I guess with the Sligo Park Hills folks, you know, maybe they should get together and try to come up with funds to put in a traffic camera, or we could try to figure out something to have better enforcement for people who do run stop signs through there. I have seen it a few times. I almost got creamed by a barwood taxi cab just last week, but those instances are rare. So I just hope that common sense will prevail when we start thinking about traffic calming or cutting off neighborhoods. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'll, let me just add that what we're going to be considering tonight is a proposal for adding a speed table on a raised crosswalk and possibly some chicanes mid-block. So it's more in line with the typical traffic calming that the city does with speed bumps. Is there anybody else who would like to comment at the public hearing?
Hello, Mayor, Council. I'm Giuseppe Chiamino. I live at 303 Hilltop Road. Thank you very much for considering this request pursuant to the city regulation, the residents of the 200 and 300 blocks of Hilltop Road, along with those residents of Mississippi Avenue, per the mayor's suggestion, whose driveway entrance is in the 200 block of Hilltop Road, have submitted a petition for the installation of traffic calming devices. There are three residences in each of the two blocks of Hilltop and four in the impacted section of Mississippi. Five of the six Hilltop residents have signed in support of this request, and of the 10 combined residences, eight have signed in support. The primary purpose for this request is to ensure the safety of pedestrians who will be using the sidewalk to be installed in the 300 block of Hilltop Road as part of the Safe Routes to School program. The sidewalk plan calls for installation on the house side of Hilltop to minimize the environmental impact on the Sligo Creek Park side. Pedestrians would cross Hilltop Road at Geneva Avenue from the park trail to reach the sidewalk. We believe that a raised crosswalk, as you mentioned, at Geneva Avenue is the absolute minimum traffic calming device that should be installed. It's sad to say, but pedestrians walking in the street are currently the only form of traffic calming on Lower Hilltop Road. Once they cross safely on a raised crosswalk and are moved to the safety of a new sidewalk, there will be no traffic calming at all in that section of Hilltop. Currently, traffic speeds up to take advantage of the long, unimpeded stretch between Mississippi Avenue and Maple Avenue on Hilltop. The city council is also well aware of the rush hour cut-through traffic along Hilltop Road. In consideration of these factors, we believe that additional traffic calming devices suggested by the Public Works Director and the city engineer be installed as well to mitigate both the speed and volume of the traffic. The devices are neighborhood-friendly in that they do not limit access to the roads to anyone at any time. And I believe this is a benefit of taking of this request over others that you've heard before. I might add that the unique topology of Geneva Avenue and Hilltop Road intersection provides a good enforcement opportunity for TPPD and perhaps a way to make this project self-funded. I'd like to thank the Public Works Director and the city engineer for their support and thank the city council for your consideration and support of this request. And if you have any questions, be happy to answer them on behalf of the residents who made the petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to testify at the public hearing? And we had, I believe, one submission to the city clerk as well that we have in our places, from Fred Levinson, for submission in the public hearing record as well. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and we will now move to a work session, discussion of Hilltop Road traffic calming. We've talked a little bit about what's being proposed. Now you can.
Yeah.
Make sure we understand it all.
We have had the opportunity to meet with Giuseppe and one of the resident briefly out on Hilltop last week. It's a very contained area with a fairly, fairly few restrictions in terms of limitations on what can be done, given the few numbers of households. And then there's no issue with on-street parking, which normally comes into play when we're looking at traffic calming in other areas. So we kind of have an open, open slate of the potential remedies to use to slow traffic. Obviously, the raised crosswalk is one that I think we are unanimous in support of, getting people from the park trail to the new sidewalk. We feel like we've got experience with raised crosswalks. They seem to work well, and we think it would be a good opportunity to place one there. In addition to that, as people exit or enter onto Hilltop from Mississippi, we think that's the other location where a speed bump or some type of speed table would be helpful to make the transition, not necessarily for a crosswalk purpose, but just to let people know they're entering an area where they need to slow down. It's not as windy and narrow as the roads they've come from. Kind of opens up because of the lack of parking, and there's kind of, at this point, people experience sort of a Speedway from Mississippi to Maple on Hilltop. So the thought there is to put a raised cross, a raised speed table right at that location, potentially a traffic stop sign at the Geneva-Hilltop intersection as a way to bring people to a stop prior to entering or crossing over that raised crosswalk. And then between that last block, between Maple and Geneva, a couple of different options there. And again, a lot of this will depend on the sidewalk design and how close the sidewalk either overlaps with existing paved area of the road surface, or has to go adjacent to the existing road, depending on the design that's currently underway through the planning office and the Safe Routes to School program. We could see two opportunities there. The simplest would be some kind of speed bump midway in the block, just to slow people as they are coming between that block. Or the opportunity for a chicane, you know, a little bump out on either side. Sidewalk's going to have to go around some utility poles, so there's an opportunity there for naturally curving the sidewalk out. That could be the location of a chicane on one side with a partnering chicane on the other side, so you'd kind of create a little bit of an S curve in that road to naturally slow traffic as it has to navigate a small bend. All these options are fairly reasonable in terms of cost. We're looking at a cost of $5,000 to $10,000, depending on what's ultimately selected. How these dovetail with the sidewalk program is yet to be worked out, you know. In some, some would think that the raised crosswalk, bringing people from the park trail to the sidewalk, should actually be an extension of the sidewalk itself, given that it'll create a continuous route. So some of that discussion needs to happen with the folks that are doing the design in the Safe Routes to School program. But those are the options that we're looking at right now, all of them very reasonable, have examples around the city, nothing that is unique or will create, we think, a level of concern about newness or oddity in the, in the traffic calming realm. And we also, again, think that because of the nature of the street, it's kind of an open palette for what we can do there.
And can you just remind us of the timeframe of the other pieces that correlate with this?
The Safe Routes to School, I'm assuming, is a FY12 construction cycle. They're in design right now, and this could dovetail with that. There is potential funding in your proposed FY12 budget. There's some unallocated money in the FY12 budget. I believe a figure of $30,000 that's currently there now that hasn't been attached to a project that could be used for a portion of this or whatever else comes up that hasn't currently been identified as, as under construction in FY12.
Councilmember Snipper.
I think the timing, I think you answered my main question, the timing issue. Have you had any additional information from the county on?
The whole Park Valley.
The proposed changes for the, yeah.
As far as I understand, and it's been a couple of months since we've had any communication, the communication we've had from the county staff is that this is in the hands of the residents in the Park Valley neighborhood to resubmit petitions. And based on the, you know, re- And based on the receipt of the county by petitions submitted by the residents of Park Valley, whose affected area now includes a larger area than they originally petitioned. And so, I don't know whether that has resulted in the folks that originally started the project to not resume the petition process, but at this point, it seems to be in a kind of a unknown, where the county is waiting for petition responses from the original submitters.
Yeah, I don't think the petition's been circulated, certainly hasn't been circulated to the residents in my ward.
Interesting.
Well, I think we have a good plan for traffic calming, along with the sidewalk, in a sense, independent of what happens by the Park Valley stuff. I really appreciate the efforts to move ahead in that kind of a design framework so that we're not either dependent or hindered or whatever by what goes on in the other neighborhood, because the needs for traffic calming on Hilltop, Mississippi, that little general area are longstanding, and this will go a long way to making a significant change in that. I go by that intersection regularly, you know, virtually every day, and see cars moving along at a very fast clip.
And now, Councilmember Seaman's with potentially a question about Ritchie Avenue.
No, not really a question about Ritchie Avenue. I just unclear exactly where would the sidewalks be planned for, and where is the speed table crosswalk in relation to that sidewalk?
This, just the sidewalk on Hilltop?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the sidewalk on Hilltop is being planned for the one side of the street on Hilltop between Maple and Geneva, so it's the side of the street where the house is currently backed to, so it's not the Sligo Creek Park side, it's the opposite side. So, the sidewalk would just be that one block-long section. And then the raised crosswalk would be on the side of the Geneva-Hilltop intersection closest to Maple Avenue, so it would be on that side of the intersection, so you would cross after the intersection at Geneva on a raised crosswalk over to the new sidewalk.
And then the, so someone could, from that point on, use the Sligo Creek Parkway path?
Yes, yes, it will connect the Sligo Creek Parkway path just at that parking section across the street from Geneva, curves around and kind of comes to the edge of the street and stops. So, it would pick up from there and cross the road and continue on the one-block sidewalk.
Well, I'm really not so concerned about the, what the county does as an independent republic. I think it's important for us to take care of our own business, and I think the proposal is, as with all of the elements, including a stop sign, would be appropriate. I would support that.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I don't ever drive that way. My various paths, places I go, I just never go that direction at all. But I just wanted to say that a couple of years ago, the city installed a raised table at the intersection of, in my ward, at the intersection of Glen Side Drive and Merwood Road, which is also forms the entrance into Becca Lily Park. And that table has been a superb traffic calming device, because really, and so I, the idea is a good one here. What it really amounts to is that it acts actually, it really has a double speed bump, because you have to slow down to get on the table, and you need to slow down to get off of it, even though it's a very minor bump. It really works, and so I just wanted to say that that's probably an excellent solution.
So, I'm looking at the map. I don't drive there maybe two times in seven years I've lived in Tacoma Park, but one time I was coming home via Sligo Creek Parkway, and my niece, who was living with me at the time, was, we were both coming home from the Discovery Center, and I saw her go flying by us. We took Sligo Creek Parkway, and she went flying by to get to us faster, and I'm sure that she was coming down Hilltop Road as we saw her cross Sligo Creek Parkway. I like speed tables also, and I like the raised crosswalks. It's a short distance, filling it with chicanes and crosswalks, but if you can do it with speed tables and crosswalks, and you don't have to put any more speed humps, I think that's a good deal. I just, I spent $2,000 having my motorcycle repaired, and I'm not sure if the front fork seals on a motorcycle with 4,000 miles on it were damaged by the roads or maybe the speed pumps, but I think that particularly for people who have disabilities, that it's a lot nicer to go over a speed table or a speed hump. It still slows people down. You can't fly over them because of the distance across the hump, and so, actually, I like them much better than I like speed tables. But they also, they don't jar you, so you can slow down and go over them in a reasonable fashion without being jarred, where I think it's more difficult to slow down and go over a speed hump in a reasonable fashion without being jarred.
Councilmember Ray.
I just want to say I'm generally supportive. I just had one question. I want to make sure I understand where the raised crosswalk goes from the southern side of, I guess it's Hilltop across to the park. Does that happen right where Geneva comes down, or do you cross Geneva in that?
Yeah, adjacent to the Geneva Avenue intersection would be on the side of the intersection closest to Maple Avenue.
Okay.
Right where the park trail comes out.
Okay. Are there any more questions?
One comment. I'd like to thank Giuseppe for all the work that he put into this. He worked, I know, a lot with Daryl and the Public Works Department, but also a lot of work with the community in bringing this compromised solution together, and I appreciate that time and effort.
Thank you, sir. I think it's a great opportunity for us to show that we have a Tacoma Park solution to the problem.
And I think the benefit that we have is that we now can have identified someone who can help us with some of the other problems around the community.
Sign him up.
So, it sounds like people are in agreement that we want to go this route. What do we need for our next step, since it's potentially FY-12 expenditure? We'll go ahead and...
Normally, the traffic calming has an ordinance establishing the traffic calming measures, so maybe once FY-12 is started, we would bring forward an ordinance establishing a traffic calming plan for Hilltop and identify the measures in that.
Okay, so any action by us, we'll wait on some further work with the design of the sidewalk, but we'll bring something forward. Okay, good. Thank you all. Okay, then we have the first regular meeting agenda item, and this is a first reading ordinance amending the code, Chapter 8.36, and this is the Commercial Management Districts and Authorities to Extend the Term of the CDA and the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority. Sarah Danes is here to introduce this item.
Good evening. Included in your agenda packet is a draft amendment, which, as the mayor indicated, would extend the term of the, this section of the code an additional two and a half years, which would allow the CDA, the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority, an opportunity to continue its strategic plan. The way the ordinance is currently written, the text expires and the enabling legislation also expires, which establishes the CDA and its organizational structure. We have also included some additional staff recommendations. The CDA's primary focus was on extending the term of the ordinance, and staff is recommending that the ordinance be amended to give the CDA the ability to increase its license fees if it would desire, to assess a higher late fee, and to adjust its meeting schedules so they would have to meet less frequently if that was something that they were interested in pursuing. It also eliminates some language regarding the city's involvement in the collection, assessment, and prosecution of property owners or business owners that do not pay their required license fee. Joining us this evening are Mr. Teague, who is the president of the CDA, board member Stephen Wilson, and Mr. Erwin Mack, who's the executive director of the CDA. If you have any specific questions, they may be able to help you with that.
Any council questions at first, and then we could see if they want to answer them or they want to say anything?
I think I'd like to just hold my questions until we hear their comments.
Okay. David, you would like to?
Good evening, Mayor Williams and Council. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I certainly applaud your diligence on this beautiful evening of being indoors. I had a few, a little bit of time to be out before I had to come back in. My name is Geneal Teague. I'm the president of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority. I've been president for the past 11 years and a member and board member since 1989. As you know, the CDA represents the businesses and property owners at the Tacoma-Langley intersection, about 150 or so. Our purpose is to promote and market the district and to provide security, maintenance, and amenities. We've been active and ably led for the last 24 years by Erwin Mack as founding president and executive director. With Erwin's announced upcoming retirement at the end of this year, that happens to coincide with the current sunset of our, the ordinance authorizing our organization at the end of December 2011. Knowing this, of course, the board, with the assistance of city staff, Councilman Schultz, and ex-fiscio board members, embarked on consideration of what and whether the organization should continue. We recognize that a transition from a founder-leader in any, can be a difficult one for any organization as it seeks to institutionalize what has been a personal effort. Also, the many successes and greatly changed business environment from the time of our founding in 1980s caused some to wonder if the organization should in fact continue or was needed. We conducted a telephone, an in-person survey of businesses excluding property owners and board members who we already had, were in contact with. Of 102 businesses, we were able to get responses from about 72 people, and we found from that survey both interest in continuing and future needs and support for the organization. With this input, after due discussion, the board voted at our last meeting to request an additional two and a half-year extension until June 30, 2014. That's so our life would end at our fiscal year-end rather than halfway through as it does now. This will give us adequate time to be attractive to qualified candidates for the executive director's position as it comes open and enough time for our organization to kind of reorganize around new leadership. It is also, happens to be the time, approximately the time in which the decisions, key decisions regarding the purple line will be made, so that when we come back, or if we come back in 2014 for reauthorization, we can tailor the organization around either the reality of the purple line coming or the reality of it not coming. Turning to the ordinance specifically as proposed, Sarah Danes has detailed some of the changes. Many of those changes are suggestions the staff has made and we endorse. We did not discuss a significant increase in fees at this time, given the kind of the transitional mode of our organization, but we certainly appreciate the opportunity to have some flexibility with that regard so that we may consider increases over the next, of a modest nature, over the next two and a half years. Likewise, we appreciate some of the changes in our, that give some flexibility regarding adjusting our bio-eyes for meetings and so on that have, over the years, we've learned can be issues for us. So, we certainly are in favor of that. We value flexibility, as you can see. The one thing we really don't agree with is the change to remove the city's opportunity to participate in collections. That is something that actually the city had suggested in previous administrations. Recent administrations have not found it cost-effective, but we think it would be a mistake to remove that opportunity if there were a need in the future, and that's what this ordinance, this change to the ordinance does. So, we oppose that change. Again, we thank you for your steadfast support in both organizing us and working with us over the last 24 years. We look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you. If there are any questions, I'm available, or you can hear from some others.
My name is Steve Wilson. I'm with Mizell &amp; Cohen Properties. We're the owner of Hampshire Place, 7505 New Hampshire Avenue. Hampshire Place was built, I think our first tenant moved in in 1990, and I joined the CDA board not too long after that, so I've been on the board a long time. Very much trust and hope that you'll vote to renew the ordinance extending the life of the CDA. We have absolutely enjoyed the relationship that the CDA has fostered with the city, and the CDA has proven to have been an incredibly valuable asset to Mizell &amp; Cohen, always promoting growth, security, and communication, quality communication with other property owners, the city, the county, the state. And so, I'm delighted that I've had the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. And we'll answer any questions that you have of me, and I second Neil's comments as relates to some of the issues regarding text. So, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Williams and Council. It's almost a bit emotional to come before you this evening, recognizing that it won't be very many more months before I'll be a plain old citizen, mostly old. 10 years ago, when the current ordinance was requested, the city administrators in those years said, "Why do you want to stop at 10 years? Let's give it perpetuity. You've done very well in what you're doing in the area. Let's just not worry about that." And it was my suggestion at that time that no organization should go on in perpetuity, that there should be sunset life. And it was agreed at that time, it was 10 years. When we agreed on the 10 years, it wasn't thought of what that would do to the fiscal year program, the very last year of existence, since our fiscal year is July 1 through June 30. And it's thrown us into a conundrum, to say the least, is to not know quite what to do with the last business license, if you will, should the organization cease to exist as of December 31. Or should billing wait until the final reading if the council sees fit to give the life extension that's requested, and that's why it's two and a half years. It would be very difficult to enumerate the value that the CDA has been to the city. And as we've listed those things, they could have been given to you tonight and probably should be given to you, we've listed well over 30 things that the CDA has either initiated or supported or been a significant part of in making that area of Tacoma Park a better place to live in, to shop in, and travel through. Not the least of which is the $7 million that was garnered through the State Highway Administration, the work of the Multi-Jurisdictional Pedestrian Safety Committee for five years to reduce the number of deaths and injuries that we earned with the name, the plume, the third most dangerous intersection in the state of Maryland. It's no longer that. Nevertheless, we've had some unfortunate deaths in spite of what has been spent. The ordinance is a simple one in terms of you're giving it additional life for two and a half years. And I would hope that the council would not go to delete anything at this point merely to permit modifications, because it's premature. The board deserves the right to come back to the council with suggestions, and then the city management and board and the council can come back and modify should that... the city management and Board and the Council can come back and modify should that be seen fit to be done. But at this point, it would not be inappropriate to delete items from the current ordinance. We merely asked for, as the letter will indicate, an extension of life. Yet, some of the suggestions are positive that would permit us to implement them during the interim time of the two and a half years. So with that, I'm hoping that you will see the wisdom of continuing, allowing it to continue, and also to use the opportunity to ask questions of the President. I had the privilege of founding it, was President for the first 11 or 12 years, and followed by a very able Administrator, Neil Teague, and we just absolutely merged beautifully over the years to do something good for the community. I'm available for questions when and if.
Thank you. And we look forward to helping you celebrate the successful reign.
I'll come by my walker. Are there any questions that I can answer while I'm here, or the others may wish to be called up?
Why don't we see, and maybe we'll start with Councilmember Schultz, who might want to either introduce this or speak to it first.
Well, let me move the first reading first. Would that be all right?
Yes.
Second, Ted?
Okay. And then, having said that, or done that, let's, let me just say that, cut some comments, is that first, it's since I've been on the, on the City Council, it's been a real pleasure and an interesting experience to be an ex officio member of your, of the CDA Board. I feel like I've been able to contribute some ideas, to help it along, and also I've just learned so much about the dynamics of that business district. It's my feeling, very, I feel very strongly about what I'm going to say, in that I think that the decision that the CDA Board has made to seek continuance is the right one. And the reason is that I believe that the, that section of Tacoma Park, if you will, stands really at the cusp of a new era. And it would be a shame to see the CDA be terminated, because if it did, it would have to be reinvented for the, to help the city monitor and guide the physical activities that are going to be coming. It seems more probable than not that the Purple Line will come, but of course, we just simply don't know, and we'll take that in stride. But we do know that the property values out there are strong and have been growing. I know community residents see a lot of vacancies, particularly on the side, on the eastern side of the Hampshire Avenue and the shopping center owned by Walgreens. But I don't think that's a fair, that's truly emblematic of the growing health of that district on both sides of this, of the Prince George's, Montgomery County line. I think the same is true on the, on the other side of University Boulevard. The fact that Walgreens took it upon itself to buy 10 acres of land, largest landholder in that area, is not insignificant, and to put a brand-new store there is also not insignificant. Which store I've been in, and it's absolutely lovely. And I think that's more emblematic than anything, certainly a lot more than a few vacancies in that shopping center. It's understood and it's reasonable that the large property owners, including BF Saul and Stout and Teague, need to get an understanding of the, of the likelihood of the Purple Line being built or not, so that they can make appropriate and logical, rational decisions for the kind of redevelopment that they want. But we have the pending sector plan, Tacoma-Langley Sector Plan, which the Prince George's County section's already been adopted by the Prince George's County Government, and we think maybe this summer, the Montgomery County will do the same for our side of that thing. The community's been working on it for years. We're going to see new zoning there. There is, the money has been, the federal money, Tiger Grant has been, has been made such that the bus transfer station, where the Taco Bell now stands, it can be built. It's just a question, as I gather, of working out a purchase agreement with the current property owner, which is inevitable. So one way or the other, whether we like it or not, there's going to be change, the likes of which probably over the next 10 years, that that area has not seen in a really long time. And it's going to be a healthy change, and it's going to be important to the, to us here because this is a large piece of the city's tax base. And the healthier and the stronger that that business community is, the better off the entire city of Tacoma Park's going to be, including not just the taxpayers, but people who are looking for a place to shop, rent office space, or operate a small business. I'm very excited about what's going on up there, and I think over the next 10 years, the changes are going to be really significant and interesting. And I do hope, of course, the Purple Line will be approved, funded, and built during that timeframe. But regardless of that, this, the first, I mean, the, I think, therefore, the, this extension of this thing is entirely appropriate. My only concern, my couple comments of concern is that I have, and I've expressed them to President Neil Teague on this, is that with the, you're, when you're stepping down at the end of this calendar year, new Executive Director, hopefully you'd want to have that in place as of January 1, 2012. And that means recruitment for that person will need to begin probably at the end of this summer or early fall. And recruitment requires a budget line item in your organization that allows the organization to competitively compete for, you know, good candidates. And I don't know what the going rate is for somebody who's got training and experience in working in commercial development areas, or bids, or Main Street programs, all those kinds of things. But there is a body of, it's a profession now of people. Ross Grigsby is just an example of one in this area, but all over the area, in Hyattsville, College Park, just to name two that are very close by, but across the state, of people who are experienced in doing this kind of work. And I would hope that the organization would find a way to make sure that it can attract the best person that it needs. It would be really unfortunate to find yourself handstrong by your own budget, by the fact that you don't have the ability to raise your license fees. Now, this proposed ordinance will allow you to do that, give you that flexibility, and I, and I hope that it will be, when you get a good new Executive Director, sure, it's going to be a shock to the system, as Mr. Teague was pointing out, a turning of, turning away from the founder of the organization, an original President, and to have a new Executive Director and possibly new Board People. But there's extraordinary potential there in all kinds of activities, not the least of which is a better and stronger, more frequent coordination between the CDA and the city of Tacoma Park. I think the city needs a good, strong, well-led CDA, just as you need, on your, from your point of view, a city government that listens and cooperates. So that's the only comment that I want to make at this time. I don't really have any, any questions for you or Neil. I would ask the city manager, I was not aware until today that this particular paragraph with regard to the city's role in, or that this particular section would be deleted from the, is proposed to be deleted from the city code. I'm just sort of curious, is that something that's really essential to do now, or could it wait until another time, seeing as there's a, the CDA's has expressed disagreement with that approach?
I think that's a matter of policy, Councilmember Schultz. From a practical standpoint, and I can't speak to what happened prior to my tenure, but we have visited this issue with the city council on a number of occasions in the past seven years. And past Council's position has been that, given the cost of, you know, pursuing delinquent payment of fees to the city, basically you really can't do a municipal infraction case for probably less than at least several thousand dollars. In the past, the council has not been prepared to spend city resources to help the CDA collect delinquent license fees. That's been a matter of practice, so if you leave the language in, unless there's council direction to the contrary, we're going to continue not to use city resources. So it's sort of benign, it's in there, but we're not actually doing it. But I think that's a matter of how firmly the council feels about that policy.
Well, let me just follow up a question. I know that the city's not doing it, and hasn't been doing it for some number of years, and that it is a benign-ish matter, as you appropriately term it. Just wonder, I'm wondering out loud that, given sort of new, possible new directions for this organization, if it might not be wise just to wait on doing this, making this change, leaving it there, keeping it maybe in a benign state? Because at some point in time, it may be, and the city might want to change its mind in terms of the, and go back to the idea of trying to, let me say, how to say this, might want to reassess that it isn't actually worth it to the city. It is, serves a valuable purpose for the city to be able to help the CDA collect these fees, even though we're consciously not doing it at the present time.
One thing, I think that's a matter of policy. I think when Sarah and I talked about this, we just simply felt that if we weren't doing it, we should just take the language out. If the council may wish to revisit that at some time, then you can certainly just leave the language as it currently is.
I would be interested to hear Mr. Teague's opinion about the value of that.
I simply want to concur with what Councilmember Schultz said. Maybe I'm sounding like the negative guy here, but I view it as frankly a rescue potential for the city. If the wheels come off our organization, and we're not doing very well, the city might, in its own best interest, decide to step in and help us. That's when you'd wish you'd had this. We're doing just fine right now. We're having our collection problems, like everybody, and, but we get it done, and it gets, it happens. But there may come a time when that's not the case. I will tell you, there was a time in the past when the, we had a volunteer treasurer, and the Executive Director didn't have that function, that we were not very good at that. And the city did help us, and it was, it was essential help. So I'm not looking to ask the city manager to change current city policy in terms of cost-effectiveness, but I do think it's a policy tool that you might want to keep for when you have to push the big red button, and there's a need.
But if there is no real downside for leaving it in, I would like to offer the friendly amendment that we strike that from this.
Yeah, I would accept that amendment.
Okay. And so, for the moment, we'll say that's a friendly amendment. But I just want to get clarification on the language that's proposed to be struck, because the way I read it, the city could get reimbursed for its costs. Because it says the city may charge the authority for the expenses incurred in collecting the fees, and for the costs, for the cost on attorney's fees incurred by the city in connection with the enforcement.
Mm-hmm.
So it seems like if we need to, it's not going to cost us. So it seems like a reasonable thing to leave it in there.
We're simply saying that this is premature, allow the Board this extension of time to meet with the city, to consider what changes there have to be made, and there will be changes made in the bylaws during this next two and a half years, significant changes. In all fairness, I almost failed to recognize Councilmember Dan Robinson, who was once a younger man, and joined us before he had all this gray hair, and actually was part of the group that initiated this. He gave us his wisdom in audiovisual help when we were going to be a Prince George's County CDMA, Commercial District Management Authority. And only because of a dishonest politician at that level did we not become on all four corners. That's when Tacoma Park came in and rescued us. That's why we're only in the city of Tacoma Park at the moment. So Dan gets consideration on that. The things that came out of the original organization in 1987 were heartfelt, honest attempts with Linda, whom you know, Linda Pearlman, as our attorney, to find parity among the members to such a degree that it's been very difficult to keep within the limits of the bylaws, because we wanted to be fair to everybody. It's not that we're not going to be fair to everybody in the future, it's just that it can be streamlined to some degree out of the simple experience of real life. So please leave it like it is for the moment, and then the CDA, under Neil's direction, should he continue as President, will certainly find a less complex set of bylaws to operate by.
Okay. And if I can get clarification on the friendly amendment? I'm assuming that's striking in Section E. The strike in the first line, it's leaving the strike and change in the second line to change the late payment fee from 2% to 5%, and it's striking the strike in the third, fourth, and fifth lines. So it's keeping the changes in there, and the late payment fee and the costs?
Correct.
Okay. So, Councilmember Robinson?
Hi. I do remember well the, working with you at the CDMA at the crossroads, and so some of my questions and clarifications reach all the way back to then. And I have a couple of questions, kind of clarifying questions about, about this, about the license fees and so forth. A couple of them, maybe I know already, but exempt businesses do not pay any fees. What kinds of businesses are exempted?
Warehouses and houses of worship.
Constitutionally exempt, and those religious organizations that are constitutionally exempt.
Okay.
And basically no others, other than, the ordinance excludes warehouses.
For what reason?
For my time, what can I say? There are very many of them, but I don't know.
I have difficulty in recalling none of them, except that the hugeness of it on a square foot basis probably would have caused a reaction on the part of the owners of the warehouses.
Are there warehouses?
There were.
Are there anymore?
We really have only minimal square footage within a particular property.
What is easy storage?
That's a business.
Then they're taxed.
They paid two fees. They pay property owners a license fee, and they pay a business license fee.
I had that, that was another question. It says that if you fall under more than one category, you pay both.
Some have three categories.
Is that oppressive to them? I mean, do they squawk?
Hasn't been.
No. That's working out all right?
Yep.
If I was a business owner in three categories, I might squawk. I don't know.
The property owners are limited to 3,500, so in some cases, you know, they may pay a larger fee for the business which occupies more space, but the property's a larger fee for the business which occupies more space, but the property itself is still limited.
Is the current cap 3,500?
Yes.
So this, the enumeration of fees stays at 3,500. Is the, are the current fees the same as the ones that are listed here?
Correct.
Twenty cents a square foot, sixty cents, and all that?
They have not changed.
Okay.
But that would be an area that would have to be considered, based on the suggestion made by city staff, which is very appropriate, that the index would come into play, because that cap was.
Cost of, yeah. I remember, I remember that the, that it was fixed, the dollar amount basically has been fixed for twenty-some years.
Correct.
Twenty-four years.
That must have been very difficult over time.
We operated under the same budget, we operated in 1987.
We have more businesses, so we pick up a little bit.
There you go, okay. So this is not, raising the fees is just keeping the fees as they are?
Yes.
Okay, that was another question. How many delinquencies have there been, as a percentage of your income, roughly speaking, over time? And give me some kind of range, so that I can...
I was going to say five or six percent.
It's the same three or four every year.
Same three or four every year, okay. And we've chosen, and then we've chosen not to pursue them?
Oh yeah, we pursue them.
We do pursue them. We just came out of the court last week on one of the members who was three years delinquent, and received the judgment against that person. Now it's, of course, a matter of collecting that amount, that's the next challenge.
Is that collection part the part that's alluded to, and the costs for the city?
Yes.
I see. So you can go to court and get the judgment?
We're allowed to do that in our own right.
And if we didn't go to court to collect that judgment, you'd have to do so.
And we do. The city hasn't gone to court.
Has not.
Has not.
I see. So the clause in there saying, "We can," or "we would," or what?
We may after request.
We may.
Or we charge.
We may charge for our expenses in doing so. That has not been invoked at this point.
And clearly, we do pay a substantial fee in collection to our attorneys.
Forty percent.
Okay. The last question or the clarification I want to make is going back to the difference between a CDMA and a bid. And I remember that when we started that, Erwin, it was a CDMA, and that was kind of the shining light, that things would go well with CDMA's, and bids were kind of barely invented at that point. And in the interim, the last 25 years, bids kind of came on strong. I don't really remember why, or what the differences is, but my question is to you is, have you looked into the difference? Do you see the differences between the two forms? Do you think that your outfit will go more toward a bid, if that's a more appropriate? Or, I'm kind of asking you to look ahead just a little bit in structural.
In fact, we did spend some of the last six months gathering information about other formats, one of which is a bid, and Sarah Danes was very helpful in providing us a lot of information about bids and other things as well. The bids, all the revenue essentially comes through ad valorem, add-ons to property. So that, instead of having, all the tenants may be members, but they don't pay directly. It's through a property rider on taxes. We don't have the tax base to make it work. I mean, if you look at the bids as they exist in downtown Washington, Silver Spring, I mean, we have a, I think our tax base is about 600,000.
When you say tax base, what?
It's the value of the properties, it's more than 600, it's...
Six hundred million.
It's about 30 million, I think.
Thirty-nine million property.
But, you know, DC, downtown Golden Triangle bids, probably, you know...
One building might be...
Two-hundred million, 300 million. So it's a different format that we didn't think would be as workable in this small locality. Plus, I think it removes the businesses from being active members, at least by virtue of their payment. They're members because, you know, but they don't, they don't have, they can choose to participate. This really, you know, requires more active participation from the businesses, because they're writing some of the checks.
Clarify then, that for me, that in a bid, do you base it on the value of the property?
Yes.
And you assess the property owners?
Correct.
Whereas in a CDMA, you address both owners and the business owners by having two kinds of fees, one for property owners and one for businesses themselves. So I have that right?
Yes, and it's not tied to the value of the properties. You saw it was a per square foot fee.
Not on square foot, I see, yeah.
This is a per square foot, whereas the other, again, we manage properties in several bids in the District of Columbia, and you just get a bill, it's essentially a rider on your taxes. It's a separate bill, but...
Interesting, interesting distinction, and I'm remembering now that it has that two...
Now, they obviously get, can and do, if the area's big enough, get very substantial budgets, which enables them to, you know, engage in very substantial programs. But it's a much bigger area.
The letters CDMA are being thrown up, and then we are a CDA. Bit of confusion perhaps. At the time, and again, I refer to you, Dan, as being a part of the original group.
I was more than just an audiovisual guy.
I know, but nevertheless, you were sat in with a...
But I did enjoy that part as well.
We were struggling to try to become an independent organization when voluntary membership, it would never work. Although we did have more than 50% of the people say that they were willing to pay some fee. And it was only when a friend from the Maryland State Housing and Community Development Organization said, "Have you ever heard of a CDMA?" And we said, "No." It's a Commercial District Management Authority, and I just gave Sarah the papers that we used at that time.
Right. And it basically...
It permitted licensing.
Right, it works on the power, police power, really?
Absolutely.
Of the city, of us in the city?
Yes.
To enable you to collect those fees?
Yes.
And it requires the folks in that area to pay those fees?
Yes.
Okay, right, right. Thank you for that distinction.
So we probably should have called ourselves the Rosebud Society or something, to avoid this confusion, as a CDA and a CDMA or something, you know?
Right, because CDA is the Crossroads Development.
Correct. It's just an acronym for the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority, Inc.
Okay, well, I'm okay with a friendly amendment there, and I'm glad to see you're here, and I'm glad to see you're having, you have plans for the future, and you're looking for the transition, and it's nice to see you both.
If I might have one for Councilman Schultz. We, I have had experience recently in another organization of hiring an executive director, and we do not have the budget to hire a full-time executive director of the quality you're talking about. But I do think, and the board has discussed this, we do think we have the budget to hire a part-time executive director, which is what we've had, and what we think is probably still appropriate. But I welcome your discussion at our upcoming board meeting to talk about that further. But we did feel that in this area, we could succeed in attracting capable candidates of that nature.
I'll respond to your comment Thursday morning at the CDA.
Yes, if you'd been there last month, maybe we'd have a different outcome, but anyway, this is...
No, I regret, I couldn't, I was busy sunning myself on the beach in South Carolina, and I just couldn't make it. Too bad, right?
Good. You could have called in.
Well, I could have called in, right.
The reason that there's been a part-time executive director is primarily because of my willingness not to expect huge sum, which I was, should have been entitled to all these years, but because it was a passionate experience, and one in which I was willing to take far less than the average person would have. And having been retired, it wasn't quite as a disaster on the family budget. But certainly, it started out much less than I'm getting now, just simply because that was the only money that was available.
Is there any public comment on this first reading ordinance with its friendly amendment? The first reading ordinance, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you all. We'll take a very short break, and we'll come back for the remaining items.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, City Manager. The, um, this item is a resolution regarding the adoption of the Tacoma-Langley Sector Plan. This is a project, as was stated earlier, that has been undertaken over many years. And it's a council process to look at comprehensive planning for the area around the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads. It was initially started with Prince George's County and is now just the area within Tacoma Park. And it includes the neighborhood of New Hampshire Gardens and a tiny bit of Hillwood Manor, as well as the entire commercial area between Carroll and the Poyo Campero. And it extends down to Sligo Creek Parkway and in fact includes the three commercial properties that are just south of Sligo Creek Parkway. The sector plan has, is now had a second official draft, and that is the draft that has been recommended by the Planning Board to the County Council for consideration and discussion prior to adoption. And the County Council has now scheduled, or rescheduled their public hearing, which will be held on May 24th. We have gone through the sector plan, which is the May 2010 draft, which, that's what it says on the title. And the draft has been also reviewed by the community. We developed, in consultation with others, the resolution, which is essentially some very similar to the resolution that was adopted previously, adopting, recommending the adoption of the sector plan by the Planning Board or the approval of the draft in order to send it to the County Council with some, and it's been, however, it's been updated to reflect changes in the second draft, as well as other items within the second draft. And so just briefly, the main changes include, there's only four conditions in this resolution, rather than a much greater number that was in the first draft. So there were many changes made reflecting the recommendation of the City Council. And these four conditions that are now in the current resolution that's before you are to retain the commercial revitalization overlay zone on the property owned by WSSC south of Sligo Creek Parkway. That's a vacant lot just south of the Cell Phone Business. And that lot is currently zoned OM, and that is recommended to be retained in the sector plan. However, they have omitted to mention in the sector plan that the commercial revitalization overlay zone remain. And that's an important part of this city input into the redevelopment process. And so we would like that to stay. And then we concur with the Planning Board, or we recommend, concur with the Planning Board to change the rezoning recommendation from the CR zoning designation to a CRT zoning designation. And what that means is the difference between a CR and a CRT, this is the new commercial residential zone. And in the different designations results in a lower level of extras that have to be provided by the developer. And one of the, one, so 50% of the extras need to be provided on, by CRT developers as opposed to CR, properties within CR zone versus CRT. And then a big difference between the CR and the CRT is that what Montgomery County calls BLTs, but are essentially transfer of land development rights or purchase of density credits from the rural area would not be required in our area. And that's essentially the recognition that the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads is an area that does not have the same development pressure that areas such as White Flint have, or Silver Spring. Not that Silver Spring is being considered, but other areas in the county which do have a great amount of development pressure, our area doesn't. And it's likely that there would be lower returns on investment in the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads area than there might be enjoyed in other areas.
Can you just clarify, if we didn't have this number two in here, then the language that's moving forward would keep the CR zone designation? And this would, this would require more than CRT would?
The CR zone requires more investment on the part of the developer, and sometimes not necessarily related to our area. So for example, the purchasing credits in the rural area, not that that's a bad thing, it's just that it's an extra cost for developers. And since, and especially in our area, we're already providing tax incentives in order to get people to develop. And in some cases, we may be looking for grants to assist them in redeveloping. So it seems counterintuitive to also require them to pay additional money in order to Remove references to the rezoning of single-family residences located in Block 4, and that's the property next to 7676. And that was brought up a lot during the public hearing that the City Council had. Incorporate general recommendations identified in Exhibit A, and that's just a sheet that's been attached. And it is basically clarifications, corrections, and requesting updates to the sector plan, recognizing that some considerable time has gone by since the first draft was written, and conditions on the ground have changed. But also just making sure that it reflects the community. And the city did receive many comments regarding updates, and most of those were incorporated within this document. So there was time for the community to review the document. I won't say there was a lot of time, there was about two days to review it, but there was, we did get considerable input, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
Councilmember Schultz, do you want to move it, and then we'll go to discussion?
Yes, I'd like to move this resolution.
Okay.
Second.
Councilmember Wright.
I want to understand how this interacts with the Purple Line. Does, if the Purple Line comes into place, is there a new set of zoning rules or any, does the plan change in any way?
The, the plan would not change. What will occur is that, what is expected is that the Purple Line would create added incentive for property owners that exist in the area to redevelop. Some of them might redevelop regardless, but the expectation is that not all of them would, that many of them would develop differently if the Purple Line were to occur.
So maybe you can help me figure out if there's a way to engage this in the process or for us to add something related to this. My concern is that there's no pressure, or there's very little pressure to develop now, but if the Purple Line comes, there'll be a lot of pressure. Some of that pressure will be good, but it also creates significant potential for gentrification and the loss, I think, of two things. One is affordable housing, and the second is smaller, medium-sized businesses, mainly, you know, single proprietorships. And so I'm trying to figure out, is this the time we engage or would suggest some language or some approach related to the, to the plan that if we wanted to, or do we? It seems like this is the time, if we really want to have something in the, in the plan, where we would make a recommendation around that. Is that correct?
Well, there's considerable amount of material within the sector plan already. There's a whole, one of the first sections in the plan is diversity. And so the plan explicitly recognizes that the area is, is an area that supports a huge range of economic incomes and people from different countries, businesses from different countries, and residents of various nationalities. And, and there are many recommendations throughout the sector plan that, that work to, to support that. At the end of the day, those recommendations are going to require continued, you know, attention and support. Like any plan, it's just a plan. And so we believe that those are already in the sector plan. And I have been talking to Pastor, we have someone who worked for us, his name is Grenier, but I understand his name is Grenair. So if I mispronounce it, I apologize. But Pastor Grenair, as well as other folks in the Ward 6 neighborhood and other areas in Tacoma Park, who are interested in talking about the recommendations that are in the sector plan and how to make sure that those get carried forward. The zoning is probably the only thing that comes out of the sector plan, which is followed up on, within, you know, within, generally, it's usually followed up upon within a year or two. But everything else in the sector plan is up to agencies, the public, organizations, and different governments to implement. So there's no, does that make sense?
So many of those things that would be connected, I think, to either preservation of rural housing or small businesses, small local businesses, didn't seem particularly specific. They seemed like general language as opposed to specific actions that could, that should be, should be taken.
Right.
Which always leaves me a little bit nervous as opposed to something concrete.
Well, there's, there's a balance, because you want to put in recommendations that are general enough that when you're looking for funding, so for example, our area has been very successful in setting up revolving loans and other types of financing mechanisms, also in obtaining funding for facade grants. So you want to have the language broad enough that when you apply for funding, you can say, yes, it is in our master plan. Because all of those state funds, they want to know that it's in your master plan to do these types of initiatives. So you want to make sure that you're encompassing whatever is coming down the pike in terms of funding over the next 10 years or 20 years. But you also want to be specific enough that you're recognizing who is going to benefit. And so that's, that's why it may not be very specific. I think it's when you get to the particular programs that it does become more specific. And we, and I know in the first version of the draft, there wasn't that much specificity. And so we did include an entire page of recommendations that we presented to the Planning Board, and then they went through with DED and looked at those recommendations, and most of those were incorporated. And those were specifically working with, addressing the issue of small businesses. In terms of housing, the Tacoma Park, I think, is very different. I think there have been many concerns expressed about housing. Most of the housing in this area is not in Tacoma Park, but it's in Prince George's County. And I know that they are developing, they have had a task force, and I believe that they provided their report to the Planning Board. And we'll see how Prince George's County moves in the direction of developing affordable housing policy. They have had policy, but it's been suspended since the 90s. So we'll see how they work through that issue. And within Tacoma Park, the majority of the housing is under rent control, or, and some of it is even owned by nonprofits that have an affordable housing. They essentially have preserved the housing for the use of low-income, people with low and moderate incomes.
What about, how does inclusion areas of the county in the portions that aren't Tacoma Park, or I guess also the?
It's all Tacoma Park.
All of the sector plans?
All of, all of the sector plan, except for a tiny corner, which is about, just a little tiny piece of a property, is in Tacoma Park.
Doesn't the sector plan also include north of University Ave and?
That's in the Prince George's County portion. And the Prince George's County portion and the Montgomery County portion split several years ago. So the Prince George's County portion is the portion north of University Boulevard.
How far to the west, though, I thought?
Just until the Montgomery County border.
Which is, I thought the Prince George's border was just to the west of New Hampshire Avenue there.
I'm sorry?
Isn't the, isn't the border just after you go over University? Isn't it just to the west of?
It's closer to Carroll. So there's a little, so the line runs just east of Carroll.
Okay.
It's, it's not intuitive. And it doesn't follow roads.
Is, still in the part that's Tacoma Park, but is also the county, is there inclusionary zoning requirements for any new housing that would be built?
Yeah, the, all of the county inclusionary zoning laws would apply to this area.
And what are those?
Those, I'm not, I can't specifically, I can't give you specific numbers, we could provide that. But the zoning relates to MPDUs, which are moderate income housing requirements for any new housing that's built. So any new housing that's built would be required to provide a certain percentage of new units that are moderate income. In addition, all of the city's affordable housing regulations would apply, as well as rights of refusal, and so forth. I, yeah. And we can provide you with additional information, they're extremely complicated, so I'm not sure, I wouldn't want to just give you additional information without consulting it.
And just in terms of, has there been any thought to creating, because there's, in some places, there's similar inclusionary zoning around small business?
That?
Does that exist in the plan, or is that something that exists anywhere in Montgomery County?
It does not exist in Montgomery County. The closest example might be the state of Maryland has tax incentives for arts-related businesses. And we did make a suggestion that a similar type of incentive be provided for international businesses. But that is something that would have to be done through a legislative process at the state, at the state level. And so that would have to be pursued independently. The, the, what the sector plan does recommend are things like providing financing, providing training, providing support. And then another, another way to work towards that is to work with property owners and make sure they're educated about the benefits of supporting a local identity that's based on international, international businesses. And, and that's, one of the things that we'll be working with the county on is to continue to ensure that the identity of this area remains, is built upon. And we don't, we see this area as a very unique area and one that is not, is not going to benefit by turning into another Silver Spring, because it won't be distinguished from any other region if that happens. And it will, it will lose its economic competitiveness if it becomes just like any other, any other commercial area. And I think one of the things that Tacoma Park is known for is local businesses and supporting local businesses, and we have several strong programs in place already that support and, and provide, you know, educational and training opportunities to businesses.
Councilmember Schultz.
I would just like to, in response to Councilmember Wright's comments, concur with him that, that it is a known concern about trying in this area to preserve affordable housing, prevent excess gentrification, and to also maintain a viable economy for, for small startup businesses. And I think, you know, having been looking at this thing for quite a while, that the sector plan actually probably does about as much of, as good a job in combination with the proposed CRT zoning to, to assure that outcome as is possible under zoning. Because generally, or sector and, and master planning, because generally, master planning is intended, which is what a sector plan is, and tell me if, if I'm off-base on this, this comment along, is really, is not, is not the tool one uses to assure the development of affordable housing. It's too, it's, it's just, it just isn't. CR zoning, in this case CRT, is designed specifically to make sure that you have development that combines commercial and residential, so that you don't necessarily have an all-commercial outcome. That the two get mixed together, which is very much in keeping with what we have up in that, in that area. So I think the CRT, the advantage of CRT over CR is that it helps the small property owners be able to preserve their ownership, to resist being bought out in a situation where they realize there's nothing they can do with their property because they're too small. Well, CRT allows them to make, to rebuild or modify their, their property so that they can stay and take advantage of the, of the growth in the area. So those are, those are the things, and the other point that you've already made, I think I would emphasize, is that the, the, the sector plan for, for Montgomery County, the entire area, this, really does not affect the residential community that's surrounding the business area, because basically the boundary of the sector plan is pretty much limited to commercial properties. Maybe not exclusively, but by and large. And the hope is, is that in the redevelopment of some of those large acreages, that it will be a mixed use, where there'll be residential units, where there aren't any even at all now. So it's not like sections of New Hampshire Gardens are going to be redeveloped, because the sector plan doesn't touch New Hampshire Gardens, nor does it touch Hillwood Manor. the sector plan doesn't touch New Hampshire Gardens, nor does it touch Hillwood Manor. So that's, the sector plan isn't going to affect residential dwelling units that are currently in existence. So is that accurate, a fair statement, what I've just said?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Councilmember Robinson.
You have to, I'm gonna back up just a minute. How do you define inclusionary zoning? What does that mean?
In relation to affordable housing.
Yo, you mentioned it in relation to affordable housing, and I thought I heard you talking about it in other contexts as well.
Most often used to refer to affordable housing, you would say that, I think the counties is like 10 or 15% of new housing units have to include something that has, that meet a requirement under certain median income, like 60% or 65%.
Okay.
So if there's a requirement that's built, there's inclusion built into it.
I see.
So you can also do the same with small business?
Okay.
So you could, you could-
You're including, you're saying you must include, you're saying to the developers, you must include a certain amount of low income or what have you. All right, just, I just wanted to be clear on what inclusionary zoning meant. And I think the only, the other thing I want to touch on was, yes, this sector plan started out as a, as a joint Montgomery County and Prince George's County effort, if I recall, and as you mentioned, it split a couple of years ago because the, the two planning entities couldn't quite see eye to eye, or they-
Timing issues.
Their underlying formulae were so different that they couldn't-
It was timing issues.
Timing issues.
So they, they're onto the rezoning phase and were, were in the discussion phase.
Okay. And are you keeping track of what's going on in Prince George's County?
Yes.
Okay. Did you just say they're in their, they're in their zoning phase?
Right. Which means that they're considering what zone to recommend.
Okay, and that section goes down University towards Rigs, am I right?
That's correct.
So it doesn't-
Past Rigs.
And past Rigs?
Past Rigs.
Okay.
There's a planned station at Rigs as well as at, at-
Delphi sort of?
No, at Rigs.
Yes, I understand.
Yeah.
But an additional one on the way to University of Maryland between Rigs and University of Maryland?
I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Are you comfortable seeing that their zoning efforts, even though they're farther ahead, are going to work with the Montgomery County zoning efforts? Are they, even though they're on different tracks, are they communicating to some degree so that there's a overall vision that's being pursued?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wright, you have a follow up?
You know, Councilmember Schultz is much more steeped in this than I am. He's studied it much more closely. I do want to point out though, that even though the sector plan has certain boundaries and things are in the plan where the zones are or, or not, that's not necessarily definitive of the neighborhoods that exist, or the impact that that can have in an economic way on properties that are outside of the zone. So while those properties are not in the Hillwood Manor, you know, we have rent stabilization, so a lot of this will be mitigated, but-
Right.
Just because those properties are not in the zone doesn't mean that if the purple line's there and there's an economic boon in terms of mixed use and retail, that that wouldn't increase the desirability of the properties that might be outside the zone and then over time have a dentifying effect.
And, and the city has participated in the task force? And in the Prince George's County task force as well?
So I guess I would ask my council colleagues if they, if, if there's no interest in trying to craft some language that would ask that the plan be more specific around some of these I won't bother to put forth language, but if people feel like there should be something more specific or concrete that the, that the county commit to in the plan, I mean, they're gonna do what, what they want to do anyway. We're just recommend, we're a recommending body. Do colleagues feel like there needs to be anything more in there?
No, I, I don't. I, I don't know that the sector, there's anything we could add to the sector plan that would induce or cause leverage, or whatever verb you want to use, any, any specific outcome of that, of that sort. You cannot, I mean, ultimately, the sector plan is a framework in which development can occur, and it sets the boundaries on, on the nature of that development, but it can't make it occur. And so you invent CRT, which produces incentives in the terms of zoning to incite developers or incentivize them to, to develop. Again, you can't be sure that they will develop, and if they do develop, you have Urban Design Guidelines that says, well, if you're going to actually develop, then you're gonna, your building needs to address these physical and environmental aspects. But it's still, it's, it's, zoning and that sort of thing can sort of set parameters of what you can't do, but it can't make anybody do something as, as a general rule. And I think the CRT comes as close as you can probably get to, to stimulating the possibility of affordable housing and building buildings, similar to what, like the Yale Teague's building in 7676 New Hampshire, which is just a four-story building chock full of small businesses. And I think if more office space were built up there, you're not going to be seeing Discovery Communications going in there and leasing tens of thousands of square feet. It's probably going to be mostly smaller business type, smaller businesses, medical businesses and professional businesses and retail businesses that'll occupy those spaces. I, I just, I mean, if I was, I mean, I understand your point of view and I, I concur that it's a worthy goal, but I just don't know that, that, what the tools would be, that, how you would do it to get the outcome of this inclusionary thing.
And just as a reminder, we're required to get our comments to the county by the 14th, which is Saturday, so we have to do it tonight. Councilmember Clay.
I think that was very well stated, Councilmember Schultz.
Oh, thanks.
That just about really hits it. So the only thing that I'll add to that is that I have not been as involved in this as Councilmember Schultz has, but I have been watching it and I feel like our city staff have very heavily engaged the process and done a very good job of balancing all of those different issues about the preservation of existing businesses, and in fact, the commitment to that, I think, has been very high and preventing, doing things that would help discourage the kind of gentrification that we would like to avoid while still making a place for development and change and for the existing businesses to make those places better as well. But what's gonna happen is there's gonna be a, if, you know, if we have a, if a purple line comes through there, it's gonna change the place. And the best zoning and the best policies aren't as effective as we would always like them to be in, in preventing that kind of thing. And I think it's, it's gonna be an ongoing effort with our city planning staff essentially leading the way in continuing to work on this issue for the next, you know, 20 to 30 years. It's, it's a, it's a long-term commitment as that community evolves to make sure, and it will evolve, you know, that, that will drive an evolution and we just, we need to stay engaged in the process and recognize that that's a really, it's a long-term commitment to that and you have to keep, you have to keep working on it. There is no sort of magic bullet, special tool that's gonna get us everything that we, that we want. And I think what the staff has come up with is just a, it's a very good balance of all of those factors. Very impressive work.
At this point, we'll take public comment. And just as a reminder, that goes up and down to the bottom, and if you can identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Thank you. I guess I have my own reason. My tax dollars hard at work, right? Good evening. My name is Pamela Spa. I live in, on Elson Place in Hillwood Manor, Ward 6, represented by Fred Schultz. I am coming tonight to talk briefly about the sector plan, both as someone whose neighborhood is bounded by the sector plan. I've been involved in the Urban Design Guidelines process and also wearing a cap. You may know, or many of you may know that Tacoma Park is a proud member of ICLI and has reached the fourth milestone for that, which is really just very inspiring to me as a resident. I'm part of the national team of people working on the STAR Communities, which is a new weekly project. I chair the Technical Advisory Committee Number Eight, which concerns affordability, social inclusion, and equity. And so I would like to make some brief comments about the sector plan based both on the fact of me living in an area that would be affected and also from my personal experience in working on this national plan. Essentially, I'd like to encourage Representative Wright in his concerns and questions and to encourage City Council to look at new best practices with respect to planning and equity. I want to thank the staff. I think they've been really great in terms of listening to community comments and encouraging them. I have three general areas that I'd just like to flag in terms of some possible concerns and questions. First, I think there's no mention in the sector plan goals, there are seven goals, of maintaining the economic and ethnic diversity of the area or ensuring that the development is equitable. There's a goal statement about fostering greater economic opportunities for residents, but nowhere is this explained of what it means. I think the sector plan should encourage, or sorry, should include a statement committing the plan to maintaining, ah, may I submit my comments?
Give it, give it more time.
Maintaining the economic and ethnic diversity of the area and ensuring that development is equitable and the benefits broadly shared. Without setting this forth unambiguously, it will be impossible to monitor and evaluate the plan along these lines and indeed to ensure that this will happen. My second point-
Now's the time. Give us a quick sense of the other two.
Okay. The other two is that the economic policies mentioned in the recommendations section are insufficient to promote a robust heterogeneous local economy. Facade grants and technical assistance are like putting lipstick on a pig to be really kind of crass about it in terms of not sufficiently meeting the market dynamics that are created by transit-oriented development. My third point is, I'm wondering what kinds of processes are available to identify and remedy any gaps or limitations in the sector plan once the process goes forward. I just want to point out two gaps, for example, in terms of, that haven't been dealt with. First of all, in the sector plan, there's no mention of the need for housing for the elderly. The elderly who at some point may no longer be able to drive are in particular need of good public transportation and proximity to services, and their needs need to be included explicitly in the plan. Another example of a gap area, and there are many, are in the Health and Wellness Section. I asked a PhD from Johns Hopkins University with a specialty in zoning and public health to review our sector plan for us. She gave me a long list of helpful observations and improvements, one of which, for example, related to the, section related to concentration of establishments that sell liquor. And she felt that, that was not at all adequately dealt with, and particularly, there are gray concerns around safety and crime and allowing them conditionally in transit areas. So again, just those three points. I want to thank you for hearing me out and giving me some extra time.
Thanks for your comments.
And I look forward to your comments and how you're going to deal with this.
Barry Howard, I'm, I live in Ward 6. I wanted to thank the city for, for its perseverance, especially the city staff that we've been working with, the community's been working with over the last, well, since 2008 on this process. Many people are very excited about the opportunities that the sector plan has envisioned and, but there's been also a great deal of concern about the change. Sometimes change makes people feel a bit nervous. Right now, I think Tacoma Park actually is meeting a number of the goals of the sector plan, and we have bike paths that have been established. We've been talking about a walkable community through designing a sidewalks network. We do have a very internationally and economically diverse cross-section of, of society, living and, and working and playing in Ward 6, and we're very pleased with this, and we are certainly concerned about maintaining that. We have a number of different housing options, and so I feel like, and also Tacoma Park, through other initiatives, has been looking at what is the tree canopy and providing even more information about how we can make some of, meet some of the goals of the sector plan through greening opportunities. And so all of this is to the good, and so once again, I want to thank the staff and also the council for, for making these recommendations and also putting a foot forward to, to protect the existing neighborhood and saving single-family homes. I speak specifically towards Block Four and, and retaining the R60 zoning for seven single-family homes that are in that block. And so we're, we all think this, this thing is moving in the right direction, especially through other things like the Urban Design Guidelines have been working on for three months with the city staff, and I think that actually Tacoma Park has set itself at the vanguard of this process for the county, and that has sort of reduced some of the, this, the gap that has been this huge leap of faith that the citizens have been asked to take in like envisioning the future because of the change and what change might bring. And I think more and more of the discussion that has gone on over time has sort of reduced or narrowed that gap and made people a little more comfortable about what may be coming on down the pike. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks for bringing up the design guidelines, because I know that we are a good bit ahead of the county in considering those. Anybody else who'd like to make comments? Okay, Councilmember Robinson, you have a comment or question?
Yes, I wondered if, I was impressed by your reference to ICLI and, and the stated goals and particularly concerning the elderly and, and diversity, and I was wondering, Alana, if, if you feel that those are adequately expressed in the goals of the sector plan itself?
I was looking through the housing. I just checked the housing. It is more general, so it says, "Support Lifecycle Housing," which means housing at all ages. So it doesn't specifically say for elderly, but I think it is, and I think implied in that is also for elderly as well as families. Many times, transit-oriented development areas focus on the high-tax-low-cost young singles, and this is specifically calling out that you want to support people through their entire life, not just when they're spending a lot of money and not costing, not requiring that many public services. It does not specifically- It does not specifically say elderly.
How about diversity?
But I don't, I don't think that would be contrary to the intention of the sector plan.
And the other, she also, she mentioned alcohol sales, which is a specific thing.
And we, we specifically asked for that recommendation to be taken out in the last set of the resolution because at that time, the city was discussing changing the laws regarding alcohol sales. Currently, you're not allowed to, to purchase, to open a store that sells alcohol, so that's not really an issue until, unless that law is changed.
Okay, and the diversity issue, I know that you had mentioned that diversity is covered in some ways in the sector plan. Can you address that as regards to it, please, while?
The plan, it, it isn't as, the statements are not as detailed. So for example, it says, "The plan recommends preserving the community's affordability and encourages the creation of a pedestrian-friendly mixed-use development."
I'm just, I'm not, I'm not trying to pick at this. I do, I do recognize that ICLI is a, a group that thinks long and hard about good quality of community, and I just wanted to kind of make the connection, I don't know if, because this is due, our comments are due in a few days, if there's time to, to bolster our recommendations in some way that goes along the lines of what, of what ICLI's recommendations are, or, I just kind of want to put it out there and acknowledge that I think those are, those are points well taken.
And we'll have the opportunity with testimony and further comments as this goes along, because it gets, it goes after the public hearing, it then goes to the council committee, and there will be further chances. Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask or speak to Ms. Spar, Pamela Spar's comments and encourage, encourage you to put your comments in writing, because I realized you had a little bit more to say than the three minutes allowed, and submit that, not to us, because we don't have the time to deal with it, I don't think, but to the, to the, the public hearing. And anything you submit, I appreciate seeing a copy of, because I think that there may be some substance to what you're saying that's worth the Planning Board or the County Council, I mean, to take into consideration. Certainly, the addition of elderly, for example, certainly isn't going to contravene anything, it just adds a little more clarity, perhaps, that sort of thing. It's not a significant change, but it doesn't hurt. And there may be some other things, so I hope maybe you would do that.
Okay. I think we've gone through this sufficiently. All those in favor of this resolution regarding the Tacoma line of the sector plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all for your comments. We will now move to a second reading ordinance regulating panhandling and prohibiting aggressive panhandling. We tabled this two weeks ago. First, we will need a motion to remove it from the table. It's been moved in second. All those in favor of removing it from the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now it's back on the table. Would somebody like to move it?
Move it.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, second by Councilmember Snapper. I think essentially the answer to the question that we had two weeks ago was, was essentially how to treat median, and the answer is the median is not part of the roadway, it's separate. The attorney provided the explanation. The chief was incorrect in his understanding, and so we now have the information. Are there further questions, comments? Any public comment? All those in favor of the second reading, this is a roll call vote. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Okay, that passes at second reading. We will now take up second reading ordinance authorizing FY 2011 budget amendment number three. Moved by Councilmember Snippers, they're second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz. Does anybody need to go over any of this? This is second reading, we want over the details of first reading. I don't see any comments. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, this is second reading ordinance. For the clerk, please call a roll.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We now move to agenda item number seven, which is second reading ordinance authorizing FY 2011 stormwater budget amendment number two. Would somebody like to move it?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Snapper, second by Councilmember Clay. Are there any comments? Are there any public comments? Second reading ordinance, for the clerk, please call a roll.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We now have a consent agenda. It has seven items on it, two of which are single reading ordinances awarding a contract for field maintenance and a contract for replacement network, backline switches, all the rest are resolutions for appointments or reappointments. We have, since we have the single reading ordinance, moved by second, by Councilmember Snapper, second by Councilmember Clay. For the clerk, please call a roll.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. That's the end of the agenda. We are adjourned for the evening. Quick meeting? Robert? Quick meeting?